The Town of Berlin. Country charm at the center of Connecticut.
Okay, welcome everybody to our town council meeting. Call this meeting to order and if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Here.
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 Here. Thank you. I don't believe Mr. Kassner is not here, so we'll hold that off for another meeting. And we'll start with our audience of citizens, so if anyone wishes to... Oh, yes. Thank you. No, you don't have to. You don't have to. Just...I'll just call one name and then you can raise your hand after the...so Marcela Winok, please. And if we can...well, our audience of citizens, we just try and keep our remarks concise and as reasonable as possible.
Marcela Winok Berlin. Hi, Rhoad. Good evening.
Hi.
Hi. I just wanted to make a comment to the council, and this is about bicentennial. Not about the park in itself, but that I feel if other council members have information to pass on from other committees, that it's very clear that it's either the person's opinion, or it's stated that it's a decision, or whatever it is, but that the information is conveyed very clearly. Because I feel in the last couple of meetings, a couple of things were said, but it wasn't conveyed in a way that made me really understand if those things were just opinions, or if they were decisions. That's all.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, like you're talking about maybe the Conservation Commission and we've met there.
Yes.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have some more discussion, obviously, with that, so...
Okay.
Good point, though.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else needs...wishes to speak? Greta? Just name an address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. Brett Stiefel, 232 Percival Avenue. I wanted to first thank you for the opportunity to let me speak again. I know it's an open forum, but I had asked to be on the agenda, actually, the day after the last council meeting, and I was purposely left off. So for the purposes of what I would like to speak about, I would like to have leeway afforded to me to speak without being interrupted, and I have some very important things that I want to discuss that need to be brought to the forefront. I want to thank Arush, and I'm gonna slaughter your last name, but I met with Arush this morning, and he is an asset to Berlin, and I think he's gonna be very good for Berlin. He comes from a great background, intellectual, smart, really good guy. I had the opportunity to meet with him this morning. Unfortunately, an employee by the name of Christie, the town manager's assistant, was...and it's a complaint that I've made formally, and I'm sure that you know about it, but she actually antagonized him, intimidated and harassed me in this meeting, where I couldn't even really have privacy, even though I invited her in to be sitting in the meeting, so that there would be a checks and balance, even though I was not taping the conversation. Not only did she rudely and unprofessionally interrupt me numerous times, because she had people coming in, including Kate, who actually came in and bombarded the door and just basically presented herself and was schuster away, but I find this behavior not only unprofessional, it's undignified, it's a slap on my face as a taxpayer, and nobody else would do that to anybody else, except apparently they think that they could do this to me. Well, they cannot. So I have filed former complaints against Christie, and I may do it against Kate. This cannot continue. I also have found out that the human resource manager has went out of the jurisdiction of her job and gone on to Berlin buzz and had me unbuzzed. Not acceptable. Now, the reason why I'm here today is to talk about the animals, the cats, that have been meandering around in the back of the Drain Doctor for five years, four of which I have fed and housed them and spent thousands of dollars of my money and have been at physical risk and financial risk also, because I had to have a rabies series twice, denied access to Save-A-Hart traps, refused by Jan Lund to have assistance, and the reason why we actually even have this problem is because of Jan Lund. And I don't want to hear anything about FOBAC, because FOBAC is gonna have major issues. I have requested 501(c)(3) data, I have requested financials, I have requested everything. I've actually been harassed by one person from FOBAC, and I am not gonna stand for FOBAC at all, because they have come to Jan Lund's defense when she was fired by the Town of Berlin, by the police department, and Chief Colette is here, so maybe he can weigh in on this, but this is a whole nother kettle of fish. Jan Lund was fired years ago because of, well, padding her overtime. Yes, that's what I've heard. It's what I've been texted by certain townspeople, and I will go on and on about this, but I will tell you this, that her, as an animal control officer, and I'm not talking about FOBAC, and I do not want to hear FOBAC people get with the cheerleader stuff, because that is not going to be the format where you're gonna come up, because I know you're here for that. The whole thing with Jan Lund and the animals are that she is the treasurer of FOBAC.
Can I just...so, we're happy to hear about the animal issue, but what I just might suggest...
I asked for this in print. I asked, I put complaints in, and I wanted to get the data. I haven't gotten that.
And that's fine. I mean, certainly if you have complaints against town employees, that, you know, we would handle it, not in a public forum like this. It would be, you know, either written or a sworn statement or whatever.
I have done that. I have asked at the town attorney. I have put in the complaint. I've asked for data.
And that's the way to handle it.
Okay, well, I'm not being answered, and it's being stonewalled. I don't know why. But, well, I'll move on from that.
I would appreciate that.
I will move on from that.
Not the right forum, that's...
Okay. I will move on to the fact of the cats, where I have been documenting every day. I've been going out to see if these cats are around. Two weeks ago, this is going on a month and a half, there are three cats that are missing the last time I saw them. They look very, very bad. One I caught myself on Sunday. On the first attempt, I caught the cat. Her name is Lovebug. She is now at our animal shelter, waiting for me to retrieve her tomorrow. Jan Lund has and was supposed to trap these cats every day for the days that she works, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. I've been documenting every single day that she works, because I have the time, because I'm disabled, and I go, and she has not only not been trapping, she goes when the heck she wants. These cats have now dispersed, and my fear is that they have died, because I haven't seen them, except this one that I captured. So Kate Winok, who's a wonderful, compassionate, amazing animal control officer, who deserves the job of animal control officer, is somebody that not only is compassionate, but she does her job. Jan Lund does not do her job, because she's doing FOBAC's job on her day job while she's being paid by the town.
Okay, let's not...
Okay. I've got proof about that, but...
That's for a different forum.
That is.
Certainly address that.
That is. Okay, so where we are with these cats now, and here's what I want to ask you.
Yes.
I have, and I've asked this before a month ago, that I can get on the property and try to trap the rest of the cats.
As I recall, the last council meeting when you were here, I thought we had an agreement that was made on the record here, if I recall correctly, that you did ask that, and I think you said you had some people to trap them, and we said if they gave the town a hold harmless and showed proof of liability insurance, that we would allow that. I'm not aware that that has occurred.
It hasn't, because they're not gonna do that. They're volunteers.
Okay, so, so, that was our agreement.
So I'm holding you harmless, as I have with my rabies series and stuff like that.
I understand that, but I don't know when that happened with your rabies, but the town hasn't always owned that property, so that's a relatively new, you know...
The town has owned their property for quite some time, from what I understand.
Uh, I don't, I'm not...the one I'm talking about, I'm not sure. I don't think it has, but that's beside the point. The agreement was if you had people to do it, and they hold the town harmless, we would allow it, but without that, the town is liable for it, and hence it falls...
So then you're liable for my medical expenses?
No.
Okay, well, so I am giving you a hold harmless letter, and I will trap it, because I'm successful at it.
I think that we probably should, we could have another discussion, probably. This is not the place to work, but I think, from what I've read and heard, I've read some of your correspondence, obviously kept up to date, that the cats that we are talking about are no longer around.
I don't believe so. I haven't seen the three of them for two weeks now, but it's not to say that I'm not gonna try.
Well, wait, wait, wait. So with that in mind, we have utilized an enormous amount of town resources and time to try and trap these cats. I think we trapped three? Two, three?
Kate trapped two of the original colony, one that was a byproduct and happened to just be hanging. Kate captured three. I captured one, and Jan Lund, zero.
Well, that's beside the point, so...
No, it's not. She's lead ACO, right?
And another issue, but so we captured, I believe, the original number. I heard in the beginning was five or six cats.
No, that's incorrect.
It seems like the number keeps going up, but that's fine, but...
Incorrect. I have the tally. I know where the cats are at my friend's, two of them, and the third one I just got.
The point is now, it's on town property, we've spent an enormous amount of time, and we have trapped a number of cats. We don't see the others around, from what I hear. So I think, and we can discuss it, you know, with the town manager on another day, but...
You do know...
I think we've gone as far as we can go with the cat issue. I believe that really we need to move on from it.
You do know that the reason why this is even happening is because of Jan Lund and her inefficiencies.
Okay.
And bottom line is, I have taken my time, my money, my physicality, while I have cancer on top of it, to do her job.
Greta.
Unaccept...no, I'm sorry. It's unacceptable, and I'm sick and tired of the stuff that gets shoved under the table here, including why she got fired in the first place.
It's not for...
I think the people of the town should know.
That's a different...
It costs hundreds of thousands of dollars out of the town's monies.
It's a different discussion, and it's...
She's still employed here.
It's a different discussion, different...
When do I get to discuss that?
Well, if...
And call for her resignation, because I want to know how I'd do that.
Well, that, as I mentioned before, if you have complaints, allegations, you certainly are at liberty to write them to us.
I have a litany of them, and other people will come forward to...
An email, a sworn statement, however you want to communicate to the town is fine with us, and we will certainly look at them and address them, no question. So that's how we really need to handle that issue. But the cat issue, we've really, I think, come to the end of what I think is fair for everyone, including the cats and the town, and our town employees and taxpayers. We've spent a lot of money and a lot of time. We've trapped some cats. We don't see any more around.
I don't see any more. I'm the one going every day, not them.
Fine, so by your own admission, we don't see any more cats, so I think we have to move on from that. If there are some housing structures there...
There are, and I will work with you guys to get them out in an effective way.
If you would, with a town employee, we can take them down, and we will return them to you.
Sure. When I can work it in with my cancer schedule and my other things. Yes, I absolutely will do.
I think what we'll do is maybe we'll have the town employees take them down.
Okay.
And we can put them somewhere, and you can call the town manager's office, and you can come pick them up.
No, I want them actually delivered, because they're inconveniently where I cannot physically do it, so I want them actually to go to a shelter. We'll talk about that.
We'll work on getting them back to you.
I appreciate that.
So, other than that, I think the cat issue, it's run its course. I'm sorry, but we really put a lot of time and effort into it. You know we have, because you've agreed to...
It didn't have to happen. It should not have happened this way.
Granted, but...
I'm so sorry. You know that, and it's not my fault.
Granted, but...
It's one person's fault, and I am sick and tired of it. I'm sick and tired of wasted town taxpayer dollars on inefficiencies, inefficiencies like that woman. I'm sorry.
So...
And she's double dipping, and she's the treasurer of FOBAC, and nobody watches the fox in the hen house. I've had it, really.
Okay, so, that's, we talked about how to handle that, and any other issues besides the cats, we were agreed to, we'll take down the shelters, return them to you. We've seen no other cats there, so I think we've...
And what are we gonna do about the town employees who are disrespectful and unprofessional that can get away with these kind of things?
Well, if you...
And what Christie did today, it was embarrassing. Now, here, Arush is the first time here. I am meeting with this man professionally, having a nice dialogue, and he had a witness this. It was disgusting.
If you've put in a complaint, if you mention it to us, we will look at that and see...
In the corporate world, heads would roll, firings would happen, but apparently not here. You can get away with a lot here.
I'm not sure that...
You know that.
I don't believe that's the case, but...
It is the case. Come on.
Your comments are heard, so, right?
The police can speed, too. I call the police on the police. They are speeding at excessive speeds. I follow them into the back of the precinct. I call them on the carpet. Are you going to a call? They get away with that stuff? Eighty miles an hour up the road? I mean, come on.
Greta, please.
I can go on and on, but you know what?
Allegations, mail, writing...
No, it's not allegations. I have it on my phone. You know what? Here, here's what I'm about. I'm about transparency, ethics, disclosure, and not omitting material facts. I'm all about transparency. It's why I have a 30-year record in FINRA, unblemished, highest level, and I am highly respected in government with my cancer bill that I brought forward. I'm gonna save lives in doing what I did.
Understand.
I've done nothing but good things, and I'm all about doing positive things and having positive outcomes. I don't want negativity.
I'm with you.
So understand that.
We're all with you.
I am here for positive outcomes, to streamline things and to make things better.
That's why we're all sit up here, too. Trying to make the town better.
Wonderful. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Greta. Appreciate it. Okay, anyone else wishes to speak? Yes, ma'am. Name an address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Amy Foster, 72 Circle Wood Drive in Berlin. And I just want to say something on a very positive note, that what I think is happening to Jan is really sad and disgraceful, and I am going to strongly encourage her to sue for slander and libel. Yes, it's in writing as well. And I will proudly and happily assist in fundraising efforts to do so, as I did when she got her job back.
All right, ladies, please.
That's all I have to say.
Ladies, 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 stop, 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 stop. Please, address the council, and comments should be appropriate, but let's, we don't want to, this is not for...
Absolutely. I'm just hearing support from Jan.
Give and take, yeah.
For Jan. I knew this was happening tonight from a post on Facebook about her intentions of coming here, and I feel like this poor woman is being singled out and viciously attacked. She's, her reputation is out there on stake, talking about padding her overtime, paychecks with overtime, and when I happen to know...
Greta, please.
That she spends countless hours volunteering for animal rights, for animal rescue. She wouldn't waste her own time and money to do so. She wouldn't take, like, very local vacations. She wouldn't, she doesn't spend money on herself. She spends money on her passion, which is animal rescue. And I just want that to go on the record, that she has my support, and I'm sure many others out there as well, for doing a great job for over 20 years in this community. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for your comment. Yes, sir.
How are you?
Scott Trevethen, 230 Circle Wood Drive. Completely different topic. Positive note, three of the family foundations in town, Tyler Cope Foundation, which I represent, the Labadia Foundation, and the Lee Foundation, have been working together to come up with a couple of different projects to give back to the town, because the funding and financing has been so good over the last couple of years. Thanks to the help of a great number of town employees, we have come up with a wish list, and one of the top items is going to be a scrolling sign, potentially in front of Berlin High School and also on Farmington Avenue, and we want to have that in the volunteer park area. The idea behind it would be something that we could control at the town level, have all the different departments and all the different town organizations be able to send in their information, so we could scroll it on a regular basis.
Nice.
Thanks to the help of Jack Healy, before he had left, we had got this started on the ground, and I feel like we've got some momentum, and I hope by the next meeting to have a much greater ability to give you some details, but wanted to let you know that the family foundations are very committed to this project and will keep you informed.
Great. We appreciate that, because it's always so difficult to get that type of information out there, so to have a central repository that people drive by and see is great. So appreciate that. Look forward to the project.
That's what I'm putting Jen on.
Yeah, if you're, are you coming back next time? We can, we can...
My hope is, thanks to Jen and a few others, and Kate, we should be, we're working to get all of the details to present to you. The challenges we have at the moment are the, we don't even know where all the obstacles are. We're trying to get that ironed out, but I think the toughest part is raising the money which we have.
Okay.
Where I ask your help as a council and as a group, is helping us remove the roadblocks that are removable...
Sure.
...so that we can do this, because I can't imagine too many people being upset about that.
Would it help to put this on the agenda next meeting?
Yeah, if you, whatever details Park and Rec has, Jen, just while we're talking about it, we can make a...
We're going to be meeting... Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
Yeah.
Um, after our, after our initial meeting, Steve Wood and I met with Maureen from the zoning department to find out exactly where the obstacles do land, how to figure out how to make it work. We have a meeting this Friday to kind of figure out exactly where our zoning regulations are and what our obstacles are. So I think, based on Kate and I and Steve Wood, let's have Friday's meeting. That's where Scott's coming and the other two family foundations, and kind of take it from there and see where we're at there.
Sure. And then, so, I mean, when you get a project to, that the town, you know, the council and our planning and zoning has to approve, obviously we'll put it on the agenda.
Right. There is a chance that it has to go, it's probably gonna have to go to planning and zoning first.
We'll go to planning and zoning first, I'm guessing.
That might happen before we go to the next council meeting.
Right? Yes.
There's something for volunteer park, of course, is town owned. So that's, and then also it would be accepting the donation, so that's why these things would be going on the agenda.
Sure.
All right, and then if we need an 824 or anything, those are the things, so that's why, once we get those items together and figure everything out, we'll put the items to get, you know, on the agenda as proper, because you have to accept all donations, and then also for an 824, you have to do a referral.
Right. Yep. Okay.
So I have a question for you, Kate. I knew at volunteer park, which you and Morgan Slum had donated the sign that has, you know, events, so could it just be replaced?
I'm going to say we're gonna talk about, I've been in touch with Donna Beach, and we're gonna, she will be at the meeting on Friday, too, and we're gonna talk about everything at once. If it works properly, then it would be a replacement of the sign.
Perfect, because I was a junior woman, and I was in the club when we did that sign.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we were trying to cross the T's and dot the I's.
So include them, and...
Yeah. All right, so, and Arush has come, I have apprised him of where things are, and he'll be at the meeting on Friday morning also. So we're just trying to not put the...
We need a bigger room, Greta.
I think so. But I don't want to put the cart before the horse.
Very exciting.
Anything else you want to discuss that we have on the agenda tonight?
Mark? I need to come back up again.
I think we'll leave that for...
Okay.
I need to come up to do a qualification or something.
Can we just do it private?
One minute.
Please.
It needs to be on...
One minute.
Yep, you can time me. Brett Stiefel, 232 Percival Avenue. This is directed at Amy, the FOBAC.
No, you know, no.
No, no, I need to find, no, she made a threat to me of a lawsuit, so as an employee of the Town of Berlin, this woman has come up to threaten me with a lawsuit of libel, and anything that I say or have said and put in print...
Not appropriate, Greta.
Is what people have told me from inside this town, employees and otherwise.
Greta, Greta, we don't want to, we're not gonna go back...
I've been threatened by this woman. I've been...
It's to be...
And there will be a lawsuit filed against FOBAC and/or Jan Lund and the town.
Greta, please.
So you want to play that game? It's fine by me.
It's not the form for that, please.
Well, it wasn't the form for her to say it.
Please.
That's okay, right?
No. It's not okay.
Okay. Well, this is gonna get to be quite bad for the town, because I'm all about media, and I will not let...
Hey, Greta.
I will not be bullied.
Greta, thank you.
You or Jan Lund.
Greta, please, that's, come on. That's enough. Thank you for your comments. All right. Anyone else wishes to speak?
Yes, sir. Up to the mic's name and address, please.
Ray Foster, 72 Circle Wood Drive in Berlin.
How are you?
I just wanted to make it known that I worked with FOBAC for 17 years, and Jan Lund is one of the most dedicated, hard-working people we have in this town. People have no idea how many hours extra she puts in when she's not working, you know, taking care of all the animals on her side, taking care of other animals and other problems. That lady should be sued for slander.
All right, well, let's not, let's not...
No, it's her personal agenda.
No, 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 stop, please. No, stop. Greta, Greta, Greta. No, come on. That's enough. No more. Greta.
This is after assassination.
No, please, gentlemen, stop. Listen, you both will have to leave. I don't, I don't want that, so please. No, all right, stop. Please, sir. Stop. Both of you. Stop. That's enough. Ladies and gentlemen, please, that's enough. If any more comments, you're gonna have to leave. We don't want to go there. We got our comments in. Please, Greta, thank you for all your comments, but that's more than enough on the topic. All right, anyone else on a different topic, please, that we want to discuss? Here, seeing nothing will end, we will close our audience of citizens and move on to our consent agenda. We have a number of topics there. We have donations, mostly animal control, Berlin boosters, Timberland. We've reviewed them all. If we don't have any questions, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Okay, I'm making a motion to accept the seven items in front of us tonight on the consent agenda.
Second. Thank you. Any further comments or questions?
Just want to say there's some very generous donations here to some, some items here that should go, you know, recognized. I mean, you got a bunch of donations to the Berlin library, uh, a large donation to the cemetery, the South Middle Cemetery, and a large donation to the gazebo at Veterans Park, so...
That's great.
Thanks to all those people that do that.
Absolutely. Donations help us a great deal, so we always appreciate any of them to any town organization. Um, any further comments or questions? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved, thank you. Agenda item one, um, is, well, I, we, we have our new interim town manager here, so it's a little awkward. He's kinda here unofficially till the next minute or so, then he will be official. So, well, it's a little awkward, sorry folks, we'll, we'll get through it, uh, 'cause he came one day early before our meeting, so we're just trying to get through the whole thing, and we're almost, we're almost through it, though. So this is just an agenda item, we have to, uh, transfer some money, uh, because we have an agreement with, with the new interim town manager, requires funding in excess of what was included in the adopted budget. So at the start of the fiscal year, surplus funds are not available in other departments, so only the source, uh, the source of this necessity funding is our contingency fund. So we need a motion, uh, to, uh, transfer some money.
Okay. Move to approve the transfer of seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars from the contingency account to the department head wage and related benefits account in the town manager's department.
Second. Thank you. Any, uh, questions, comments? Hearing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All right, so moved. And now, we have our appointment of our interim town manager, um, and approval of the employment agreement, which we've all been provided in our packets. And in accordance with the Berlin Charter, the interim town manager can serve for a hundred and eighty days, so we need a motion on this.
Okay. I make a motion to appoint Roche Jero Rickrima to serve as interim town manager. Approve the agreement between the town of Berlin and Roche Jero Rickrima as interim town manager, and further move that Mark Mayor Kozinski be authorized to execute, execute the agreement on behalf of the town of Berlin.
Second. Thank you. Thank you for the second. Uh, any further comments or questions? We've, I, 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 no, we've all reviewed the contract, so all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved. Well, congrats.
Thank you.
Glad to have you. And I'm, and I'm glad to have someone that's, last name is much worse than mine, I believe. So that's, that's a relief for a change, so mine will be easy maybe to some people. So, listen, Roche, we're, we're happy to have you, we welcome you, and, uh, first town council meeting already, that's great, huh?
Wonderful, look forward to it.
So I'm gonna hand you the reins.
All right.
You're on now.
Great.
We'll help you, though. We'll help you through it, don't worry. You know, you got some, uh, some catching up to do.
Yeah, so first of all, thank you very much, the council, and also to the staff members at the Berlin Town Hall. You've been very warm, welcoming, and, uh, my first two days here has been very exciting. And I actually look forward to, uh, working with everyone in the town and hopefully make things better.
Right.
So, um, we'll get through all these challenges, uh, and that's why we are here, so the people. So, um, so there are some, uh, new business items. What I would do is, um, my first meeting, I will go through it as it is laid out, but maybe after my first meeting, I'll have some recommendations on, or perhaps we can improve certain things. I don't wanna, you know, rock the boat too much, I might be asked to leave today.
I didn't sign the contract yet, so, uh, be careful now, we're good.
Right.
All good, thank you, very much.
So, uh, the first few ones, I'm, and I'm told that these things happen quite regularly and frequently, but, uh, I'll introduce the subject, and there are subject matter expertise, I'm sorry?
Oh, you have to do three, right? It's, it's still a carryover, yeah.
Yeah.
Three. But, we'll, yeah, we'll just, we'll do three, and then, then you can start on four. I, I realize, yeah, three is, uh, still, uh, out of your purview for a moment.
That's okay.
Just a moment.
I'll step back.
Uh, change the, uh, summary of this agenda item is, we're gonna change your authorization from Jack Healy and/or Mark, uh, another good name, Kazakowski, to Roche Jer, Jer Rickrima, uh, as I stumbled through that, I apologize, Roche.
That's okay.
Interim town manager effective July eighth, two thousand nineteen, so we'll need a, a motion on that.
So moved.
Okay, very good. Uh, so, so, well, that motion, just, just, just...
Do you want me to read it?
Yeah.
Move to substitute Roche Jero Rickrima interim town manager as the authority apply for grants, enter into grants agreements, and execute other specific contracts, including signing checks on behalf of the town of Berlin. Said authority having previously been authorized to former town manager Jack Healy and former interim town manager Marie Kazakowski, effective July eighth, two thousand nineteen.
Right, thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, any further comments or questions on that? Hearing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved. Now!
Okay.
Now, you're on. Number four.
Take two.
Yes, thank you.
All right, so, uh, the first, uh, fourth item on the agenda has to do with the library's participation in the Connecticut Library Consortium and the Library Connection, and as a result, uh, taking all the discounts, and the move is to ask, approve the purchase orders for the following vendors that are outlined in your handout.
Great, thank you. Um, so, if we have any other questions, if not, we'll take a, take a motion on this?
Sure. I move to approve purchase orders for, for the following vendors due to the library's participation in the Connecticut Library Consortium and the Library Connection, Inc., as the best discounts have been, already been provided. This is the, in the best interest of, of the town. We have supplies books from Baker and Taylor Company for adult books of forty-three thousand, books from Baker and Taylor Company for children's and teen books of twenty-two thousand, supplies data services and audio visual, visual from Library Connection, Inc. for fifty-two thousand dollars, and network maintenance and data services from Novus for twelve thousand dollars.
Second. Thank you. Any further questions on that one? Or comments? Hearing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
opposed, so moved. Number five.
Thank you. The next item comes from the Berlin Parks and Recreation Commission, at its meeting on June thirteenth, recommended naming the Berlin High School tennis courts, the Rex Smith Tennis Courts, after, um, Mr. Smith was a dedicated teacher and a coach in the town for over thirty years.
Yes. Um, fortunately, he, uh, passed away suddenly, right, in November, and, uh, so the tennis courts, uh, they're great, they, we, we, right, we renovated them, what, I think, what, two, a year ago, right? Two years ago we finished, something like that, so it's, it's a great honor, so, uh, we'll go ahead and take a motion on this.
Sure. Move to approve the naming of the Berlin High School tennis courts to the Rex Smith Tennis Courts in honor of Rex Smith.
Second.
Thank you very much. Yes. Yes, absolutely.
Before you guys vote, Eileen Thurston wanted to come and speak about Rex.
Oh, sure, absolutely. Mrs. Thurston. Great, welcome.
Welcome. Eileen Thurston, one hundred Sawmill Drive, Berlin. Um, as a co-teacher and his department head, as well as a coach in town, Mr. Smith took, um, up the job of teaching math and coaching tennis in Berlin, and September first in nineteen eighty, he taught here for thirty-eight years. He coached here for possibly even longer than that, as far as I can find records, it was thirty-eight years. Um, I did want the town to know that this was not just pick a name for it. Um, Mr. Smith, I can honestly say guided those tennis courts through being renovated. I have many text videos and the pouring of the cement to the choices. He sent me looking at many, we disagreed many times on what color things were, but, um, I will say that it is a great honor for him. He took sick on Halloween and passed away five days later, um, very suddenly, leaving all of us, um, with a great hole. He truly is not a man that ever would have asked for this. We're asking for this in his honor. Um, we would like the possibility to dedicate them during the Ivan Lindell camp that's going to be run at the high school. He was very instrumental in getting that here. Um, the day we're looking at, Ivan Lindell, who is a tennis great himself, will be here. We're looking for August eighth. Um, we have submitted, and hopefully at the Parks and Rec Commission meeting, we'll have the sign that we intend to donate, um, approved, so that on your next agenda, the sign would be there for the twenty-third, so that everything could go, um, as planned. Um, I do have over a thousand signatures from people in the town that, um, signed in support of this. So I did want to let you know that it wasn't just a little thing that came up. I've been working on this for, I don't, since easily February or March, so, um...
No, I'm, we're sure it's a lot of work, we, we read some of the...
So, um, I, I do want you to know that this would be a true honor to have these dedicated to him.
It's, thank you very much, and, uh, I think all of us here, we, it's the right thing to do, I think we all recognize that, so we appreciate all the work.
Me?
Yes.
So, um, he was my, both of my son's math teacher, and my younger son was on his tennis team for a couple of years, and, uh, they were very sad to see that he passed. So I, I, when I saw this in the agenda, I was really, um, very thrilled and very moved. So I really do thank you for your work towards this. It's, it's truly meaningful, and I, I think it's a wonderful, um, thing to put in memory of, of him, 'cause he was a great guy, you know, professionally, personally, and, and, you know, for the kids in our town, so thank you for your hard work.
Yes.
I've had the pleasure of knowing Rex quite a while, uh, longer than he probably would want me to tell, but, um, when I was appointed to the council, the first email I got from a citizen was Rex's.
Oh, really?
And, uh, it was, it was very instructive, and, uh...
Fix the damn courts?
Yeah.
Okay, there you go.
Something like that, and, uh, they continued right, right until we had the suspension pouring out there, so it's well deserved, he was a great guy, and thank you for your efforts.
That's great, thank you all, and, you know, we, we all were happy when that finally got done. We knew, we did all that with the new high school, you know, I, I remember, you know, my first term Wyatt never got included in the high school project is whatever, water under the bridge, but it's good that we got to it and, and we got it completed, so, so that's, that's all great, so. With that, we'll go ahead and, uh, look forward to you guys at the next meeting, but we have a motion tonight to approve the naming.
Did I already, was I seconded?
We seconded, okay, so that's, that's where I forgot, we had done that, so we, we got off track a little bit, so we have a motion on the floor, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved. Thank you.
Right.
Great.
All right. Do some good thing.
Okay, number six.
Number six, uh, comes from the Parks and Recreation Department, in requesting a bid waiver for the annual maintenance contract, as well as upgrading software for the Vermont system. Um, description of the system is the recreation management software utilized by the department that allows online registration and payment, as well as scheduling, invoicing, record tracking, et cetera.
And, uh, yeah. We're waiving our bidding, so, know you have a great reason.
So this is a company we already spend, um, money with every year to do the annual maintenance on the recreation management software. It's what we use for our registration, it's what we use for our billing, for our field reservations, our community center reservations, so we're already in with this company every year. This year, there's just more money in the budget because we have to do a manual, a mandatory upgrade. The software is being upgraded to this new version, and it's not going to be, the old software will not be supported, so if we have issues with the old software, we won't be able to call and get tech support anymore. So it's a mandatory software that all the towns that use this software are going through, so we're just asking to be able to move forward with that.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other questions? If not, we'll take a motion?
Sure. Move to waive the bidding requirement and renew the annual maintenance contract and award the software upgrade contract to Vermont Systems for an amount not to exceed thirteen thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars, as this is in the best interest of the town.
Second. Thank you very much. Uh, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved.
Thank you.
Good, thanks, Jen.
Let me introduce the items. Uh, Chris, you can speak to probably seven and eight. Um, seven, they both relate to the eight eighty-nine Farmington Avenue property, and the work that's going on with Lory, uh, Engineering, uh, conduct, conduct additional rounds of groundwater sampling from three levels located in Farmington Avenue. There's another location on the number eight, so I'll have you explain both seven and...
Thank you very much. Chris Edge, two forty Kensington Road, Berlin. Um, yes, item number seven is, um, looking to, um, add to some of the work we're currently doing. We had put a monitoring well in the right-of-way at the front of eight sixty-one and eight seventy-three Farmington Avenue to determine whether the groundwater was coming up from eight eighty-nine to that point. We did get a hit on one of the wells. This essentially will, through our insurance company, uh, put in three additional wells between the right-of-way and the eight eighty-nine property line, essentially to determine where it's coming from, to see, is it coming from there, potentially coming from the, um, I guess that would be the west side at that point. This will help us in a couple of different things. One will give us the four quarters. Four quarters is what DEP uses as their baseline. If they see four quarters of results, they use that as what they go forward with for planning. Um, so that's basically, um, working in addition to what we've done, and basically DOT has, I'll say requested mandated is a better way to put it, when we're done to take them out. So this is both putting the wells in, testing them, and then pulling them out when we are done at that point, and that's what these monies are from, and I believe these are covered by our insurance company under the off-site, um, liability policy. Yes, our insurance carrier, yes.
Yeah.
That's number seven.
Okay, appreciate that. Chris, um, questions of Chris? If not, we'll go ahead and, uh, take a motion?
Is it one question?
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry.
I want one removal well.
I do not know. I, I, I believe it's probably more filling in than getting rid of it, but I think it's more the, um, the liability of having the actual hole itself, yes. Yeah, no, I, I think it, yeah, yeah, yeah. You can't really remove a hole, you're right. I think it's... Thank you.
In Berlin, we do different things, Charlie, you should understand that by now, all right?
I understand grouting the well, yeah.
Make, make a bigger hole.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, we're gonna take a motion?
Okay. Move to waive the town's bidding process and authorize the interim town manager, or the new, uh, the new interim town manager to enter into a contract amendment with Lory Arrow Engineering, to conduct three additional rounds of groundwater sampling from the three wells located in Farmington Avenue, and to remove the three wells at the end of the sampling period for a fee of thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars. That is to be paid by our insurance carrier, since this is in the best interest of the town.
Second. Thank you. Any further, uh, questions or comments? Hearing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Number eight.
Yes, I realized I had kinda mixed and matched, I did not mean to do that. Um, this one actually is the four additional groundwatering wells, like, wells are gonna be between the right-of-way and eight eighty-nine. Um, essentially, again, looking to see if anything is coming from the west, and essentially in addition to what we're already doing, they're gonna need the four rounds, again, four rounds, one each quarter for the one year for DEP. That'll essentially help us in two things, one determining where, again, where it's coming from, but more importantly, two, if we do need to do a hydraulic control system to basically clean the water coming out of eight eighty-nine, this will tell us exactly what we need to do and in which direction. We need to then do that work. Uh, there is a piece in here as well for eight thousand dollars, which is for, gimme thirty seconds, I can just tell you exactly what it says. Um, consulting services, and this includes a couple of different things, uh, which is attendance or conference call participation for bi-weekly Newport and eight eighty-nine update meetings, which is with the big mixed-use development, preparation and review of cost estimates for mediation and capping of eight eighty-nine and hydraulic control system, town council meetings as needed, uh, meetings with DOT, DECD, and DEEP, as well as miscellaneous deliverables. When these agencies asked us for information and reporting, they put it together for us under this amendment.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other questions of Chris? If not, we'll take a motion?
Okay, I move to waive the town's bidding process and, and to authorize the interim town manager to enter into a thirty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollar contract amendment with Lory Arrow Engineering for additional investigations and general consulting relating to the off-site groundwater plume from eight eighty-nine Farmington Ave, subject to approval by the town's insurer for the project, and authorize the interim town manager to enter into an eight thousand dollar contract amendment with Lory Arrow Engineering for consulting services related to the onsite considerations at eight eighty-nine Farmington Ave, and for coordination with the TOD project to be paid, to be paid the[1615.25] coordination with the TOD project to be paid, to be paid the demolition and environmental remediation account.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any further comments? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, number nine.
Number nine, Mr. Mayor, this is a update you had requested about simple recycling collection.
Yes.
There's a memo attached, an update.
Yes. Yes.
No action required, but just an update.
How are we doing?
We're off to a rocky start.
I see that.
You didn't, you didn't receive this mail yet, did you?
Uh, I think most of us.
Did you?
Yeah.
About, I think thirty-three-
A few people on my street did, some didn't. I don't know. I didn't get one.
Just, just to refresh everyone's memory, this is for the shoes, the clothing, blankets, soft textile type recycling, which is free and will get paid twenty dollars a ton for whatever they collect. So everyone should have received this. Unfortunately, the mailing list was a taxpayer mailing list. It was, so the owners of record got these. Further, they took out east Berlin Kensington addresses because they didn't realize they were the town of Berlin. So that left about five thousand people who didn't get, or properties that didn't get these.
And I read that today, but, but that wouldn't cover why I didn't get one, because I live in Berlin and, and I'm a taxpayer and that's my house. So it's weird, on our street, like, uh, just a few, two or three people got them. I don't think the rest did. So I don't know what-
I also heard something about the post office had piles of them in there.
Oh, great. Okay. Well, let's blame the post office.
There's going to be a second shot at this mailing list. We're going to actually get the act- we're just going to do it to every resident, whether they're renter or owners in those properties. We think it'll take about four to six weeks to get everything online. However, if anyone wants bags, we at Public Works have a couple of cases of the bags. They can also go and, or they can call us and they can email the company directly or call them and request them, and they'll mail them to them. So if someone's in a real hurry to get rid of their shoes and clothes and blankets, we can, we can help out.
It's sad for this long. What's the difference in another four weeks?
Yeah. We, we actually, yeah, Jim Horrible and I called, uh, the rep, the rep today, and she said, yeah, the, the pickups were suspiciously low, you know?
Okay.
And I was like, well, they missed five thousand, you know, actual property. So, um-
Well, that's just one point I wanted to bring up, too, is I saw a lot of, um, I didn't see a lot, but I saw several people that had bags out on the side of the road. And they, it feels like they've been there for weeks and months. Um, uh, I know it happened to you. I, I know one person on my street had a bag on the corner there and it's been out there for so long that the grass is now dead.
They, they should be, yeah. They should be timing them with the, you know, biweekly recycling.
Yeah, right. It's not a deal we have to them.
So, well, if anyone sees those bags, let us know. We can actually call the comp- they want them. They want the bags.
Yeah, they want them. Yeah.
Yeah. So if anyone, they can call Public Works and they let us know what streets are on, and then we could just, uh, it's a nice, nice white van with blue lettering that'll come around, so people are concerned about what, who's picking it up. It actually has a logo on the side of the van, so.
So I saw one on Hudson Street. It was there for, like, you know, four days or so. Um, it's not there any longer.
Oh, okay.
But, um, you know, I was wondering, you know, when is it going to get picked up?
Yeah.
So, um, I have not seen any bags on my street yet, but I know there will be. And like I said, I did get the-
Yeah.
I think there's one on mine. They did pick it up. So they're supposed to pick it up the day of the recycling, right?
Yes.
Put it on the recycling day, right, of the blue bins?
Exactly.
The blue, uh, okay.
So I know that there's something in the citizen about it. Do you think they could possibly do an update that, you know, some citizens didn't get?
We could probably do some Facebook outreach, you know, post on Facebook. I'll talk to Jen. She runs the, the Facebook posts and-
Maybe on, uh, town-
Maybe on the website.
Yeah.
Um, and maybe a news, maybe an article to one of the reporters.
They had one, right?
Announcement that's in the citizen, pretty much. I've seen it lately now. So maybe just-
You know, I'll take a look and we'll adapt it. Put some, the email address and the phone numbers.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
And that's great that they're going to pay us, right, if they collect, uh, they need to collect so much or whatever?
Uh, no.
Whatever they get, they pay us.
Exactly.
Which will offset our new-
Yeah, recycling, yeah, hit.
Recycling charges, right, which is a good, good thing. Increasing every year, I guess.
Right.
All right. Well, we appreciate that, looking into that. Thank you very much. Got a lot of questions walking the dog on that, so now I can walk the dog in peace, say those-
Hopefully in a month and a half, things will get worked out. I think residents then will get the timing down, too, so.
Great.
Any other questions?
Thank you. I think we're good. Thanks a lot for that update. Appreciate it. Um, number ten.
Number ten pertains to the golf course, Timberland driving range policy. Uh, this has to do with the driving range, trying to restrict how many yards that people could hit the ball. Two hundred or below, so.
Right. Yep.
It's going to, going to tell us, John's going to tell us how we're going to do it.
Um, the commissioner had requested to have the, uh, policy change that was originally enacted by the parking rec to, to limit the driving range to irons only. Just give you a quick little history of this. Um, the reason why is because people were hitting balls into the neighbor's property. And we had gone to limited flight balls, which travel about fifty percent of the distance of a regular ball. And then we had gone to irons only. Um, now, the, the, the commission would like to go to a policy that says no shots allowed over, hit over two hundred yards. Um, and we have a two hundred yard marker sign down there. And, um, the problem is a lot of people can even hit irons, two iron, three iron, well over two hundred yards. So we're trying to limit it, the, the distance that they can hit it.
So we'll keep the balls out of the adjoining, uh, blueberry hatch?
Correct.
Don't mix well with the blueberries?
We don't want to do that.
No, I know, I know that. I know. I know you guys have been trying to work on fixing that, so appreciate that.
Are you keeping the restricted flight balls?
Yes. Oh, yeah.
It doesn't say that. That's why I thought maybe you were changing it so people can hit real balls, but-
No.
Okay. That's a good idea.
Okay. That's great. Um, so we'll take a motion.
Okay. Move to approve the change in the driving range policy to read as follows. The driving range is provided for the benefit of golfers. Because of its size and location, there will be no shots allowed over two hundred yards. Appropriate signage will designate the range limit. Individuals exceeding the range limit will have the unused balls confiscated and will not be permitted to play golf on the day of the infraction, as well as losing playing privileges for the following seven days. Cash customers will receive a coupon, which can be redeemed for the unused round after completion of the seven-day suspension.
Second on that?
Second.
Second. Thank you. Uh, any further, uh, comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries. Um, thanks for that. And, and thanks to the Golf Commission for working on that some more. I know we've been trying to work that out, so appreciate. Hopefully this, this works, right? We think it's going to work? Member of the Golf Commission City, that's what I'm asking. Yeah. Good, good. Appreciate that. Thanks. Okay, number eleven.
Number eleven, another one from the Timberland Men's Golf Club is requesting a waiver of greens fees for the New England Public Links Championship Tournament.
Okay.
Um, again, this is a waiver of greens fees, and there are seven clubs in the NEPGA. Um, and they're, they're scattered all over Connecticut and in Rhode Island. So, um, they're looking to have the event on Sunday, um, July fourteenth, which is this coming Sunday. Tea times from seven forty-five to eight forty-five. Some of the clubs that are from considerable distance away, the men's club has provided, um, hotel information for them to stay overnight in Berlin. Um, if they have, if they're taking off seven forty-five, they don't want to be traveling two hours to come and play. Um, three-year average greens fees on the second Sunday in July is approximately, excuse me, twenty-eight hundred dollars. And they're looking for a waiver of two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars to men's club. Um, carts, carts are mandatory for, for each of the players, so we will generate thirteen hundred and forty-eight dollars of revenue from the carts. Again, this is only, it's only taking up, um, really approximately an hour of tea times on Sunday morning.
Great. Okay. Any further questions of John? If not, we'll take a motion.
Okay. Move to approve the waiver of greens fees for the New England Public Links Championship event that will take place at Timberland Golf Course on July fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, in an amount not to exceed two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, further comments or questions?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
Um-
Sure.
Uh, I would just like to thank you for attaching the, uh, the last page on here with the itemized town contributions.
I'm sorry, I didn't mention that. I was just looking through my notes. Um, the men's club over, since two thousand and eight, has, has donated over twenty-five thousand dollars to the town and to the golf course, uh, fishing derbies, junior golf. Um, it's all listed in, in the, uh, information that you received.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, that's great.
John, that's a big deal having that tournament here, isn't it?
Yes. They, they, it, it used to be ten, ten clubs, actually, and now it's down to seven. So it was on a ten-year rotation. That Timberland would host it, but now it's on a seven-year rotation because there are only seven clubs. But it, absolutely, yes.
Great. That's good. All right. Uh, number twelve.
Number twelve is a request, uh, again pertaining to golf.
I'm sorry, did we not vote on that? All right, I'm sorry. I'm still off the, off my game tonight. Too long of a break. What do we have, three weeks off? That's not good. Uh, okay, so we have a motion right on the floor? We second it? Okay. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, so moved. Thank you. Sorry. Number twelve.
Next one is a request, uh, from the director of golf to utilize this tee sign account for beautification around tee signs and clubhouse, for additional course advertising, as well as for the purchase of other signage.
Okay.
Um, originally, the, the tee sign program was, was set up with, I don't know if Chris Edge is still here. No, he doesn't. Um, but it was in conjunction with Chris Edge and people at the golf course. What we did was, we sold advertising, small plaques on the bottom of these very nice tee signs that we had, um, put on the golf course. And the advertising paid for all the tee signs. Tee signs are approximately seven hundred and fifty dollars a piece. So we generated, um, somewhere around, uh, I think it was around twelve thousand dollars total. And this is in this account that's listed in your agenda item. Um, we're just looking to have the ability to, to spend the excess funds on beautification of tee signs, beautification around the clubhouse. And we're also having, um, a gentleman who owns a company that does drone flyovers. He's going to come in, he's going to do a flyover of the golf course, uh, each hole, and we're going to put that on our website also.
Oh, nice. That's cool.
And we'd like to have the ability to pay for that on this account.
Okay. Great. Thanks. Uh, any further questions? We'll take a motion.
Move to authorize the director of golf to utilize the tee sign account for beautification around tee signs and, and clubhouse, for additional course advertising, as well as for the purchase of other signage.
Second.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? If not, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Uh, number thirteen.
Right. So the next seven actually pertains to, uh, facilities. And the first four of them, I'll take one at a time, uh, has to do with, uh, requesting the town council to waive the town's bidding procedures. Uh, has to do with contracted services account, both for, um, building, public buildings and schools. Second one is for school. And same with the operating materials account as well, again, for public buildings and schools. So perhaps I would ask, uh-
Yes. Yeah, come on up, Doug.
-to come in and-
Poor Roche, wouldn't want him to get involved in all this now. He's going to be, what in the heck is going on here, right, Roche? It's all right. No, it's okay. You got it. You're getting it.
I'm getting it, are ya? Um, yeah, the next four, uh, relate to goods and services rendered, um, for vendors and contractors that we utilize in all the town buildings. We have basically our two checkbooks, one for the town buildings, one for the school buildings. The majority of these vendors and contractors are on either state or national contracts, but there's a few mixed in there that we found over the, the few years have provided the best pricing continuously, time and time and again. And what this is doing is allowing us, um, what we run into problems is the cumulative POs. Um, it doesn't take long to hit ten thousand on, on a bigger project or a major breakdown. So these vendors have consistently provided the best price. So we just want to have the ability to, if we need to increase it up to twenty-five thousand, we pick twenty-five thousand. That's kind of the state guideline now for purchasing, so we're trying to follow that. Um, a lot of the contracts fall in the ten to thirteen range. Um, some of them a little bit more, some a little bit less. But if we have a vendor come back multiple times, um, at the same building or various buildings, it doesn't take long to get that PO up above ten thousand. So a lot of this is proprietary equipment, um, factory authorized service, and the vendors that provide that service. So we're always looking for new vendors and, um, trying to reach out to people constantly, new people to come on board. But for now, just the time of year and the workload that, that's ahead of us, we just want to be prepared financially if, if need be. Hopefully not.
Great.
It's difficult, um, to know when things are going to break, how much is going to break, and where they're going to break and the cost of it. But what we're finding is with the infrastructure, some of them, a- as they age, um, parts are becoming more obsolete, more expensive. And then the people that we can get those parts from is a little more and more limited. So we're kind of forced to arrow down where we can purchase from, so. So that takes care of the, the next four relate to, to those vendors for the two checkbooks.
Okay. So we'll, we'll go ahead and go through these four, and then I know you got something else, right?
Yep.
Uh, we'll, we'll-
A few others, yes.
Vote on these four. Don't go anywhere. This probably won't take too long. And, uh, one quick question before I forget. So thank you for, I know we, um, uh, Mayor Kozakowski authorized, we have, uh, uh, we installed the air conditioning unit, right, in the police locker room?
Yes, yeah.
Finally. Got them some air conditioning? And, and is it working well?
It's been holding seventy-two, uh, no complaints from the officers, uh, that I've heard yet.
Officer back there. You got, you guys much happier now? Right.
About time.
And, and it really, it's a temporary fix, but, but, because we're going to redo the HVAC system and all that with the, with the jail cell project. But I, you know, you guys have suffered way too long, so I'm glad we got to finally get that approved, uh, before we get to the whole HVAC-
I had some relief for the summer months.
Yeah, I, yeah, because I know we were trying to get the HVAC, but I know it was delay, right, into the fall, right? It tied in with the jail project, right?
Yeah. The, the timing of everything was difficult to have the major work done before the summer, so this, this will get them through.
Yeah. Great. Well, thank you for doing that, and I hope you guys are more comfortable. All right, so number thirteen, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion to approve, uh, Department Thirty-Eight purchase orders for contractors up to twenty-five thousand dollars. Move to waive the town's bidding procedures and approve issuing purchase orders in an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. Department Thirty-Eight contractual services account for each of the following contractors. Uh, Clearwater Industries, Water One Tech, Landry Communications, Drain Doctor, Associated Security, Security One-O-One, Johnson Controls, Train U.S., Automated Building Systems, Calvert Safe and Lock, Stanley Access Technology, Dakin Applied, Hussey Advantage, Swan Associates, and Kone. This is in the best interest of the town.
Thank you very much. Any further comments or questions? If not, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries. Thank you. Number fourteen, uh, we'll just go ahead and take the motion.
Sure. This is a approval of Department Thirty-Eight purchase order increases. Uh, I move to waive the town's bidding procedures and approve issuing purchase orders in an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. In the Department Thirty-Eight Operating Materials Account for each of the following vendors, FW Web, Electrical Wholesalers, Filter Sales and Service, MC Management, Tall Brothers, John Boyle, Swan Associates, and Hidoka New Britton Plumbing. This is in the best interest of the town.
Thank you. Uh, any further comments? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. So moved. Number fifteen?
Oxygen.
You're all right.
I heard it. I heard it.
Three weeks got to me, too.
Yeah, it's too long. It's too, we're off our mark tonight. Yeah, that's all right. Uh, okay, go ahead.
Next one. Okay. I move to waive the town's bidding procedures and approve issuing purchase orders in an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. In Department Sixty-One Contractual Services Account for each of the following contractors. Clearwater Industries, Water One Tech, Landry Communications, Drain Doctor, Associated Security, Security One-O-One, Johnson Controls, Train U.S., Calvert Safe and Lock, Stanley Access Technology, Dakin Applied, Hussey Advantage, Swan Associates, Kone, and Horton Electric, as this is in the best interest of the town.
Second.
Drain Doctor was mentioned in the previous one. Does that raise the amount to fifty thousand for the Drain Doctor?
I, I think it's different.
Different.
Uh, two different departments.
Departments are different. I was checking that, Charlie, myself.
One was for the, for the town buildings, one's for the school.
So, but he could have fifty thousand dollars worth of work from the town without a bidding process?
Um, but the way this is written, potentially, yes. Yep. And I believe, I'm not sure, um, there was a, I believe a shortlist that was pre-approved for on-call services. I believe he's still on that. I'm not sure if that contract is still active or not. I'll have to double-check. But through Public Works and, and the Water Control, he's-
There is a third account, basically.
Yeah. Working for various departments throughout town.
Just want to make sure we understand that. The intent, because it, we're letting it to ten thousand by ordinance or by charter?
Oh.
By charter.
By charter.
Still, the access is here a couple times.
Five times with the charter, right?
Right, so.
At one vendor.
Just, I mean, it's a good point. And I, 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 I know, I think with Drain Doctor, some, I remember some of the contracts, he was the sole bidder, but, but, but I don't know if that's all. So, Mr. Counselor, um, when we do these things, what, I mean, if we're way over the charter amount, I mean, this is, what do you, what say you on this, just so we know?
Well, it's a waiver.
Right. So we're waiving it. No matter what, no matter what the charter says, we're waiving it, yeah.
The whole idea behind the limit is at the, uh, pound and operational standpoint, you have a standard operating procedure that you can't deviate from without the express prior approval.
Right. Okay. Do it. Yeah, okay.
It's a local company, right?
Correct, yes. Drain Doctor?
And for a lot of issues, he's the only vendor available. I get it.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of these are on both, so.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, it's not, it's not just him. Right.
Right.
Yeah. Um, so, yeah, no, I mean, that's the, that's the policy decision we make, you know, based upon our authority and, you know, you have obviously explained it to us, but it's good that we are aware of what it, it may be over that amount in the, uh, charter, but obviously that's our policy decision.
Yeah, that's why there's a charter.
Yeah.
Emission, we might want to think about.
We, we did, I think we tried to up that, right?
Wasn't a lump, some, uh, one-
Yeah, we tried to up that.
Item and it didn't pass.
We never could get that, right? It's very difficult to get it up with the voters. But, um, that's all right. So, uh, I think it's in the best interest of the town, all of this, so. All right, we're good, so take a motion on-
Sure. Move to waive the town's bidding procedures and approve issuing purchase orders in the, in an amount of not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. In Department Sixty-One In Department sixty-one operating materials account for each of the following vendors. FW Web, Electrical Wholesalers, Filter Sales and Service, MC Management, Toll Brothers, John Boyle, Swan Associates and Hidoka, formerly New Britain Plumbing, as this is in the best interest of the town.
Second. Thank you. Any further comments on that one? Hearing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved. Seventeen, oh, different, different one. We got through those four. Number seventeen.
Number seventeen, I should do a contractor pool for the HVAC system replacement, the senior center multi-purpose room.
Yeah, two years ago in capital, system number one was replaced. And then this year in capital, funding was provided for system number two. So the multi-purpose room will have two new HVAC systems.
That's great. Taking care of our seniors, that's always a good thing. Okay, take a motion on that?
Sure. Move to utilize State of Connecticut contract number ten PSX zero-one-five-two AA for the purchase and installation of HVAC system number two for the senior center multi-purpose room from Train U.S. of Rocky Hill, Connecticut in the amount of thirty-six thousand nine hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents, which includes a ten percent contingency of three thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars.
Second. Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Just a financial question. So we budgeted for fifty thousand for this and just short of thirty-seven thousand is what this costs. What can the remaining thirteen thousand be used for?
It's in our capital account for the town building. So we can either go towards another senior center project or another town building project.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. Yeah, I mean, remember the, what was that? What was the last thing we voted on, something for the senior center, right?
Kitchen floors?
The floor, the floor. But that was coming out of last year's money, right? So I don't know if the, I hope the, I think the Board of Finance met tonight. I hope they approve that. But if not...
There's a few more projects on the list at the center that we...
I bet you there's plenty.
We can devote that towards it.
Good, okay, that's great.
Just a quick side question.
Yep.
Housing Authority owns that building, correct?
Uh, yes.
But the town owes the capital improvement to the building that they don't know.
Yeah, it's a great deal.
It's our current agreement.
It's our, yeah, it's our, it's the agreement with them, yeah, that's kind of how that works, so. Good question, for full transparency on how it all works. Okay, great, so we'll, we took a motion, right? We were on the vote. So any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved, thank you. Number eighteen.
Number eighteen is also to waive the bidding process, right, to the authorized me, Drain Town Manager, to increase the purchase orders for sole source service provider, Automated Building Systems of Glastonbury, Connecticut, in the amount of fifty thousand collectively.
Okay. Excellent. Okay.
Yeah, that's, they're the sole source Alton distributor in Connecticut. So they maintain all the school buildings. Our annual service contracts for the five schools is right around twenty thousand. But there is some billable time and materials outside of the service agreement. So we just want to have the ability, if needed, hopefully we don't need it. But if we have major breakdowns or any major components that fail, we'll be able to get them back online as soon as possible. We just figure, we use ten thousand per school. You know, there may be more at one school than another. Basically, the high school and the middle school have the most components within them and the most complex systems. When the elementary schools don't have as much, so.
Great. Um, just if we could refresh our memory, because someone was asking me some questions about this and I didn't remember at all. But the HVAC systems and the other, obviously the high schools new, but the other schools over the last three or four years, we put a lot of work into them, right?
Yeah, the middle school during the renovated, the IAQ project about ten years ago, received all the mechanicals. The elementary schools received all the rooftop mechanicals when the roofs were done over the last five years. So the last thing to do within the elementary schools is the classroom ventilators.
Okay.
We do have a project designed to retrofit that with a chilled water system, a four-pipe system, should funding be available in the years to come. We have a design for that. It was engineered out with an architect and a mechanical engineer that seems to best fit the buildings as a retrofit. The challenge now is that we have solar panels on all the elementary schools, so we're limited to what we can do on the roof.
Oh.
So...
So the HVAC systems are all new, relatively new, in all the other schools?
Yeah, the high school, obviously. The middle school, ten-year-old systems, the high school, five. And all the rooftop equipment on the elementary schools is within five years.
Okay.
But the classrooms are hitting the thirty-year mark.
With that particular project, so what, how would we get around the solar panels?
Um, it would be a chilled water system, a four-pipe system. So you'd have chilled water and hot water running through the building. And then the units would be replaced in the classrooms instead of an air-cooled system. It would be a chilled water system.
How much does that cost? Now, that's for all the, the three elementaries?
Three elementaries, yeah.
Well...
The latest, the latest project budget was, we were over the million mark.
Hey, right, that's a significant mark.
Yeah, that was, you know, we have, we were given some project budgets based on the system we wanted to go with. So anywhere from three-quarters of a million up to a million and a half. Until we really put it out in the street, we're not going to know what...
Don't know.
What we're going to get, so.
Okay, well, I appreciate that update, just so, can answer some questions. Great. Okay, we need a motion on this one?
Okay, move to authorize the interim town manager to waive the bidding process and increase the purchase orders for sole source service provider, Automated Building Systems of Glastonbury, Connecticut, in the amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars collectively.
Second. Thank you very much. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved. Nineteen.
Nineteen pertains to the town hall door replacement project, requesting a bid waiver, in this case to cover voices related to environmental testing and monitoring.
Okay. Anything else on this, Doug?
Yeah, the Environmental Hygiene System was brought on board in two thousand and fifteen when we did the original design for this project. And then we finally able to do construction this year. Their design was under ten thousand at the time to do phase one for the plans and specs that went out to bid. But the monitoring during construction was going to be billable on time and material. The samples that had to go to the lab for the PCBs and the asbestos, the disposal, writing the plans, or, I'm sorry, the closeout reports, the air quality testing onsite during construction. So unfortunately invoices exceeded ten thousand once they're all finalized and submitted.
This was to change one door?
Seven.
Seven doors.
Seven doors.
Seems like a phenomenal amount of money.
They were here evenings, nights, mornings, you know, monitoring while construction was happening.
And they were required to have the air monitored during the entire construction process?
Part of the plan with the PCBs and the asbestos was to provide that monitoring, so.
And did we have PCBs and asbestos?
We did, yep. So they, the good news is that what was identified in the plan from initial round of testing, nothing expanded further in and around the site. So we didn't have any additional exposure risk other than what was previously identified. So everything's been abated in containment and hauled off site and disposed of properly per EPA and federal state guidelines.
Charlie, we need to get in the air monitoring business. Okay, now, we've got to make sure the air is clean, we get it, and with asbestos and PCBs, we understand, so.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll take a motion on this?
Move to authorize a bid waiver and process payment to EnviroMed Services of Meriden, Connecticut, to cover invoices in the amount of seventeen thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars related to environmental consulting and testing related to the town hall door replacement project.
Second. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Number twenty? Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next item is from the Director of Finance relates to realigning the budget on some of the items that were spent on various lines. Total amounts to thirty-nine thousand. The largest amount is in the police department budget. There's a spreadsheet attached in the back.
Yes.
From what I understand, it's moving back from what was police personnel to overtime are needed to cover the unexpected pay in lieu of vacation time request. That was the largest amount. Then there's twenty-five hundred dollars related to the water commission hired a summer intern. And there's another fifteen hundred dollar adjustment between two lines, medical personnel and health insurance.
Thank you. And for the benefit of the audience and the record and the, you know, beginning, end of budget year, obviously we're in the beginning of a new budget year. So this occurs all the time, just like the other votes we just took on bringing some funding in different accounts. So that's why we went through all this budget housekeeping tonight, because we're in that new budget year and we have to just make some moves with some of our accounts. So appreciate that. So any other questions? If not, look at the attached list, we'll take a motion on this?
Okay, move to transfer thirty-nine thousand dollars as detailed on the accompanying spreadsheet to cover higher than budgeted expenditures in identified accounts.
Second. Thank you very much. Any other comments? Hearing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved. Okay, so we are, what do I do with my thing? We're next.
Appointments.
Appointments, appointments, Cemetery Committee. So we have a candidate for that. We'll go ahead and take a nomination.
Sure, I'll nominate Stephen Pastuzak for the vacancy in the Cemetery Committee.
Okay, thank you. Any other nominations? Believe there are any, hearing none. We'll go ahead and close the nominations and take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, welcome to the Cemetery Committee. We appreciate him wanting to donate his time. And the Cemetery Committee is moving forward and taking care of some badly needed work in some of the town cemeteries. So that's great to see, we have another candidate there. And what, so we got our town manager's report. Roche, you've been here two days, what do you have, come on, what do you have for us?
Two days, it's been very exciting, a lot of observations. So what I would like to propose, at least for the next meeting, is that when I drove around the town and I spoke to a lot of people and I today visited a lot of different buildings and projects that are going, a lot of excitement here, a lot of good things happening and there's a lot of potential for the town. So what I like to do in my town manager's report, and obviously I need your buy-in and opinions on this, to try and put together before the meeting a short report with, you know, bullet points or paragraphs on, you know, big topic items, on the things that matter to the town, the large items, impact items, to bring you up to speed on them, you know, sort of give a, you know, background, update, and then next steps. And because I think we sometimes get lost in a lot of the, you know, going down rabbit holes on things that are probably not that important sometimes. And there are a lot of things happening in the, in the, in the town. And I would like to report those things to the town. So I would like you to think about what's important to you. I mean, obviously the big capital projects come to my mind and things that had to do with schools and where big dollars are spent. But they also needn't be big dollars. There could be some things that are benefiting a lot of people, a lot of service oriented things. And I'll find a way to get that information to you so that I'm not sitting here and talking for half an hour. I'll give the report to you beforehand and maybe hit some of the highlights and give you an opportunity for you to ask questions.
That's great. That's great, to all of us, that'd be great, yeah.
So the second one is, I'll be careful when I say this. My observation that a lot of the town staff spend a lot of time pushing paper, a lot of bureaucracy, and I, probably that's a bad word, they're just complying with the town charter and what needs to happen. I would like to probably propose, recommend, not tomorrow, once I get a chance to just talk to everyone, that are better ways to introduce some efficiencies to the way we do business. And I say that because a lot of the professionals, they can add a lot of value if I can relieve them from some of that other stuff that they're doing. They have a lot of expertise in what they're doing and they seem to be bouncing around with a lot of paperwork and, you know, I get this much of stack of papers to sign every day. And I think that's okay because I'm probably catching up. So I might have some recommendations on that, probably this is not the forum to do it. But I'm going to have some observations and I'll share that with you and see where we want to go with that.
That's fantastic.
Me too.
Great. We're all for it, right?
Yep.
Everybody's all for it.
Efficiencies are good.
Yeah, we know, we know the inefficiencies of government, so maybe we can make it more efficient. As in any organization, it's anywhere, private or public, but, good. All right.
Can I ask you one question? Are you lean trained?
Uh, not really, no, no.
Just wondering.
I understand some of those lean management concepts and six, seven, and all of those things. But I have not really gone through a formal training for those things.
Thank you.
Yeah, all right. Thank you very much. So special committee reports, I don't, we have not had any. Probably the next one we need to look at is the ordinance committee again. We'll have to review it, I don't remember what was left on there, what was left. We took some votes, we cleared off some of it. We'll get up to speed on what's left on that, we'll try and set a meeting.
We're trying to have a fields committee in first week of August. Just, you know, so everybody knows, the work on School East Field has begun and I thought Jen was going to stay longer and I was going to try and pin her down. Maybe she could give us a brief one, but I missed that opportunity and I apologize. But it's supposed to be on target. I mean, we've had some good weather, no rain. So I think the target is by the end of August, some of the teams may be able to start using that field and then it's supposed to be ready for September, so. And then they're going to start the updates and safety precautions on the bleachers and phases also. So we'll have an update. I'll try, maybe I'll talk to Jen and maybe she can say something next week, or next meeting.
We do have an update, I can give you an update. Jeff might remember the letter better than I did, but, yeah. We're a little bit delayed on the field, which is disturbing, but there are some provisions for that. But as Jen explained to me the other day, when I signed the letter, you know, calling that to the company's attention, obviously, right? That, that they, I think they said in, whatever, Jeff, I'll let you explain it better than me, but that these initial steps won't put us behind, but...
The way, the way that we set the contract up is we have milestones and we have liquidated damages at five hundred dollars a day for missing milestones. So they missed a couple of the initial milestones. They missed the commencement mobilization start date and the procurement start date. So there's, we've notified them that we've assessed liquidated damages against them for missing the milestones. Missing the milestones doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to miss the substantial completion date, but we have to be aggressive in order to make sure that Castle Booze, who's the designer and providing contract administration services for the town, is on top of whether or not the substantial completion date is in jeopardy. Because if the substantial completion date is in jeopardy, quite frankly, we need to declare a default and go to the performance box surety and really crank up the heat in a hurry.
What's the date they're supposed to be done by?
I don't know, but I remember I'm in September, yeah. I mean, I was just going back to the last email, so I haven't talked to her.
Yeah, pretty early in the holidays, right?
Like everything was going fine at that point. They started on time, but you've got some new information.
Yeah, they're about twenty-six days behind. Based on milestones.
But they claim, right, at least Jen told me, they claim that those initial milestones, they could make that up, right?
Right, there's flow and they can make it up. It's the milestones don't really...
Matter?
Matter to them.
Yeah, to them.
It matters to us because if you don't have milestones, then you're sitting there in late August looking at a field that's nowhere near being done.
Right.
And there's no contractual relief. So right now, we're holding thirteen thousand dollars and we've notified them that it's continuing at five hundred dollars a day. They've since met those milestones, but we're still holding on.
Right, they're still behind, right? Well, they met the milestones.
They met the milestones.
So we're okay, right now?
The accrual of the liquidated damages for those milestones has stopped.
Okay, because they met.
Right. So it runs from the date that they were supposed to meet it until the date they did meet it.
Uh, Charlie?
I don't know what the pictures of this type of construction, but the weather this year has slowed every single project in the state. My work is way behind because there's so much rain, so many rainy days. It may have led to the progress.
Yeah, I mean, there's provisions in the contract where they can request an extension of time if they think they're being delayed by weather, they haven't done that. Again, contractors, they're concerned with the substantial completion date more than they are the milestones, but the contract...
Hopefully they'll catch up, I'm just, I'm not trying to defend them, I'm just saying, every project I've been involved in, we're back right away.
Okay, well...
Yeah, I mean, we did a, basically replaced a synthetic turf field in another town that I represent in May. So they went in, they took up, it was crumb rubber infill, they reclaimed the infill, stripped the synthetic turf, made some drainage modifications, added some stone, put a new carpet down, new infill, the whole thing was done in May, one month.
Which is really good.
So, same stuff pretty much. So it is doable.
And how long is ours taking now?
The schedule allows it to take about two and a half months.
Hmm, that's, that's interesting. Hmm, that's, that's interesting. Okay, well, let's, let's hope, uh, we're okay. Well, we're on top of it, so I appreciate you staying on top. I know Jen's on top of it, Parker and Rex on top of it, so we will, uh, I guess-
She's got every milestone on her calendar, so.
Yeah, so that's good. Now, I know we're on top of it. Yeah. All right, well, we'll do the best we can. Um, okay, so Council of Communications, anything to add?
Yes, sir. Can, um, the town collect car taxes biannually instead of annually? Is there anything preventing that from happening? Because I know we collect real estate taxes biannually. We voted on that, I think it was last year.
Yeah.
Um, is there anything preventing that?
There's not, there's no, if you're, there's no state law that prevents you from doing it biannually. The question is whether or not it's in the charter.
You know.
I think it's just- Instead of paying a thousand dollars all at once in July between two or three cars for a family, you split it up.
Problem that comes in, in my former life, uh, there's an update to the motor vehicle, uh, in February, I believe.
Oh, and that's what's used to assess, yeah.
The NADA numbers, right. P N A D A numbers.
Well, no, if you're not on the assessment in October, or by September, October they pick you up, or February they pick you up. So we'd have to look at that and see if it's doable.
Yeah, I was just thinking about, like, you know, kind of like apportioning out how much you pay instead of, like, all at once. Like, July's a really tough month for the people, so instead of paying a thousand dollars all at once, you kind of split it up. But it was just, you know, a topic for discussion if we need to.
I, I think it's doable. I think we'd have to get with the, uh, Taxpayers Association and the motor vehicle.
Yeah.
Or at least the Taxpayers Association, they're, they, um, but I agree. I mean, you buy a new car and-
We all decided to do it as, uh, for real estate, and then we didn't do it for car taxes. I didn't know if it was a-
But there, you know, there might, now that you say that, there might have been a reason why we didn't do it. I just, and that could be it.
Yeah.
I, I don't remember why, unless we just didn't deal with it.
Just something for discussion.
Yeah, it's worth looking into. It would be nice to split that in half, too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, instead of getting it all, uh, once in July. So we'll look.
You think you spent a long time in a motor vehicle, now do that.
Be careful. All right, any other, uh? Yes?
So, um, I have a couple of things. One is, uh, I've been in town, hmm, like thirty-three years or so now, and, um, the one thing that I see is we have so many volunteers, whether they're on boards and commissions or in there and, um, different organizations throughout town, whether they're a nonprofit, a five-oh-one-C-three or, or not. And I really think that part of Berlin's strength is the fact that we do have people that work on nonprofits, um, for the betterment of our town, so I, I just want to recognize what they give, because they're volunteers and they give of themselves. And the other thing I want to say, on a personal note, that, um, Kate Wall has been wonderful, um, whenever I've gone to you for assistance, and I really appreciate all that you do, so thank you.
Thank you. Get all that for Kate. Always call Kate when we need that.
Answer. Kate scrambles and finds it. She doesn't know it off the top of her head, right? And she, she doesn't know it off the top of her head.
So Roche, there's your, I go to, I'm sure you figured that out already, but, uh.
Go-to person.
Okay, what else we got? Any else on that? No? Okay, we're good. So we'll go on to our acceptance of minutes. Uh, we have the minutes, just one, and we, uh, there were some corrections to the minutes that were handed out. So we incorporate those in, and, uh, go ahead and take a motion on that?
Okay, motion to accept the town council meeting minutes from Tuesday, June eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, as amended.
Second. Thank you very much. Any other comments? None. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All, any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, now we need to, uh, come to the end of our agenda. We need to move into an executive session, so we'll have to unfortunately ask members of the public to leave, other than who we invite in, so, uh, we'll take a motion.
Okay, motion to move into executive session pending litigations, Connecticut General State Statrics, Section one dash two-hundred-six-B, strategy negotiations with respect to pending claims or pending litigation. Now, the prospective litigation concerning Zero Adkins Street and the Helen Riggs case.
Thank you. Second on that?
Second.